So I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for the public hearing for May 19th to 2025. The first item on the agenda is the public hearing for Daniel Russell property and property owner John DiNato and Timothy Roberts, 70th Center Street and Brookside Avenue. And this has to do with a lot line boundary line adjustment. Either of those gentlemen are here?
I'll make it. But if I move up front here.
That would be just terrific.
Good.
I'm gonna ask Ken, do I need to make a motion to open the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I have a motion from one of the members?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing Monday, May 19th. I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. For the benefit, since it is a public hearing, for the benefit of the people who may not have been here at the previous meeting, if you could just spend a few minutes.
Sure.
Relighting the board or relining the board.
Yeah.
Just taking points.
So you have maps. I brought extra some planning board stuff. But if you don't need them, I'll give you some. So John DiNato is right here and Timothy Roberts own these two parcels at 70th Center They own a parcel with their house on it and 0.413 acres and they own a separate parcel that is vacant with 1.691 acres on it. They'd like to make their house parcel bigger by adding 0.98 acres of the vacant parcel to their house parcel in a lot line adjustment. So as you can see on the map, we're gonna just get rid of that line or says line to be eliminated. So then parcel, the house parcel will be 1.401 acres and the vacant parcel with front of John Brookside Avenue will be 0.703 acres. And as I always say, sometimes it's easier to look at the little inset map up in the top there. So nobody's planning on building anything and we're not creating any new lots at this time. So that's a lot money question.
The resulting lots are all conforming.
Yeah, yeah. Do any of the planning board members have any questions of?
Mr. Russell.
Mr. Russell, sorry. I apologize.
I'm sorry. I don't know your name.
I have no questions. I have no questions.
Is there anybody in the public that has any questions regarding this application? Not hearing any? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on May 19th, 2025.
Regarding this application?
Regarding this application, yeah.
So it's second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So usually you would collect these. These are certified letter.
Thank you. I appreciate that. See if the building inspector gets those.
Yes.
Okay, then I would like to make a motion. Does the Village of Chatham Planning Board accrue the lot line slash boundary line adjustments for parcels A, B1, and B2? Did the parcels A and B1 to B merged? Tax map number 66.05-01-07 and tax map number 66.05-01-08. This approval is based on the survey and notes dated January 16th, 2025 by Daniel J. Russell, PLS license number 050639. The results of the lot line adjustment will result in both, both the combined parcels A and B1 and the parcel B2, both meaning compliance with the Village of Chatham Density Control Schedule for parcels in the R1 residential district. As for the secret determination, a resolution dated June 24th, 2024 designated certain minor subdivisions and boundary line adjustments as a type 2 action.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That takes care of this.
Okay. So how do you usually go about getting a map stamped? Is this something that you don't have to do it now because you got a lot of people here?
I guess, and then I'm the acting chairperson tonight, I will be stamp, having them stamped. Well, I'll leave them with the building inspector and you can come in and pick them up.
Okay.
All right?
All right.
And how many maps have you left us?
Uh, six or seven.
Do you know how many maps the county needs?
Two.
Two, yeah.
Two, okay.
So we should get two back, four back if possible, a couple for Mr. uh...
I will likely, okay, well, we'll stamp that one, stamp that one.
Make sure you have enough for yourself because I got a handful.
You know, I keep, I always keep one on one of these people that it helps with other zoning applications in terms of people that don't have surveys to be able to look at a corresponding survey and understand better.
Make sure to see my phone number.
Okay, so have two. Do you have extra ones? Somebody else have extra ones?
I only have one copy.
Okay, so this...
You want me to leave this?
Just to leave one. So the, the building inspector will have a copy and file that, assigned and...
I'll give you the rest of them.
Then the other two?
Yes.
Will come back, will come back to you.
Well, we should get four back because two to file and a couple for Mr. uh...
Yeah, so five to...
Okay, well, then you do want to leave the, leave three of them and I'll...
Yeah.
We'll do it that way.
I'll hold them so they're all the same area.
While we're doing that, let me identify what the next item is on the agenda. It's new business. The applicant is James Petzer, who's the property owner. It says for Top Form Holding LLC for 5153 Kirk Street, tax map number 66.13-01-08. It's for a site, site plan, special use permit, a change of use from a flawed health and fitness which requires special use permit to a service business of laundromat in the rear addition of the building only, as presented in the application. The original front portion is not changed.
All right, thanks everybody.
Thank you. And this, this is a new application before the board. I would appreciate if you could identify who you are.
I'm James Petzer.
Okay.
Ron and Monica have a Top Form Holding.
Okay. If you could take a few minutes for the benefit, well, let me ask this first, first question. Have you seen the letter from the Chatham Fire Department in regards to this application?
Yes.
You did?
Yes.
Okay. So why don't you take a few minutes and explain to the board as well as the people that are here as to exactly what you're planning on doing?
The community's been asking for a laundromat in the town and I decided to provide that for our community. So I'm the person building from Rockland, Monica, and the back end of the building with the states. New laundromat.
The space has been, we've had it now for seven years. And as you can imagine, COVID pretty much emptied out the building and we're closed as a gym. So it's been kind of empty though. So we've been fortunate to find someone willing to develop the property. It's a private, it's a private closed gym. So there's most concerns with traffic and we really have very few members. There's a renter in the front part as well who has a jujitsu club and that is very small, 500 square feet, four or five members.
Okay, this is, this is one of, was there any more that could link up? I'm sorry.
No, that's it. So then we were thinking that back two hasn't been used in a very long time.
In terms of looking at the site plan we submitted, there are some questions that I had. It appears as though it's a site plan from a few years back. You, you mentioned the fact that there's a jujitsu business in there. What it says on the site plan is that sheer images in there, they're no longer in there.
They are no longer in there.
Okay. So the drawing for the plan needs to be updated to reflect how the interior of the building is actually being used.
How that is.
Okay.
Site plan doesn't involve these kinds of buildings.
Well, the use is doing in terms of the parking and under...
Well, it's not a park, but the actual interior configuration isn't a other site plan.
Yeah, nothing.
Hasn't changed.
Okay. Okay, in terms of the, well, let's see, I'll look through the questions that we have here. This back portion of the building, we were talking about putting in the laundromat. Do you know when that portion of the building was constructed?
Yes, in about terms, so 15 years.
So that was made in about 2000?
That was an addition.
About 2010?
Yes. It was under Marianne Curtis and Mrs. Claus.
Yeah, Mrs. Claus, yeah.
Now I'll ask the building inspector, do you know if a building permit was ever issued for that?
Absolutely. I went to the zoning board. I was the secretary at the time when they went and yes, they went to the zoning board, got a variance and got a building permit.
Okay, just...
And a C O.
There's, the parking space numbers on this appears to have been changed or altered or whatever from what was on here. And there's, it starts off with 19 and 20 being, appears to be, being added up here, which resulted in numbers being changed over here. Is 19 and 20 new parking spaces that are being added to the site?
The, the back portion?
That was there.
So are these?
These are all added.
These are spaces being added?
Yes.
Okay, so again, in terms of understanding the site plan, it, it'd be helpful to identify that these are added spaces. These are new, new parking spaces. Okay?
I think they were always there. She has now.
It's dirt and it's gonna be...
Well, I looked at the survey and the survey kind of led me to believe that the parking didn't go that far. So anyway, that they're, they're new spaces.
Just to make it more uniform with the number, I'm sorry, we had...
I understand that and, and, okay, but I, that said, there's new spaces. So there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven new spaces being added along the side here?
Yes.
Okay. Can you tell me what, is the parking lot, all right, let me go with the question I got here. Okay, so these are not new, but 21 through 27 are new.
Yeah, I would say when you say 21 through 27, 27 are new, but they're now, but they're not marked.
They're marked.
They're not marked. It's a dirt, it's a dirt piece of land.
And can I ask a question?
By all means.
Are the spaces confirmed to minimum requirement?
Yes. Yeah, it was nine by eight.
Yeah, nine by 19, I think. Yeah. And then you could have like three to five spaces per reuse and so there's plenty there.
Well, there, according to the square footage, there, there are enough parking spaces for both this building and the addition and this back building.
Parking stands for retail and service. There's three to five spaces per thousand square feet of gross floor area.
Right.
I think I took a 20 something.
So let me ask you, do you know if we have a site plan when this was, addition was put on that shows?
Yeah, that's it.
That shows?
It's in there.
This is, this was the site plan?
Yeah, he took a copy of it.
Okay. All right, so I guess that's again what turns a bit confusing in terms of what had been added and not added and the...
Instead of getting a whole new survey done.
Yeah. Okay.
So this is being added, this little addition here?
Yeah.
Well, the addition's there. They're just using it for a different use.
No, no, there's a...
No, there's a, it says they're adding...
They're adding all the addition.
Oh, yes, yes. So that was approved as well. They just never built it. So the foundation was there.
But there's no, there was, there's no building on it. There's just a foundation, this little space right here. And what will that be used for?
That's to compute wash and fold service.
Which is gonna be a great, a great place area.
And you're saying that was already approved and just never built?
Yes.
They never built it?
Okay. Okay. In the front of the building, the use currently is right now is...
Top form, gym and...
Inches. Okay. Will that operate at different hours than the laundromat or the laundromat operating?
They're hardly ever there. Yeah, the laundromat's gonna be probably six in the morning to 10 at night.
And the top form is only a person in training and we have location, or it's only by appointment?
Okay.
Yeah.
The drawings that show the speed wing information and stuff, which really is helpful, it doesn't end up actually showing this wash and fold service. Doesn't show the addition on the building and any of these that that's what the space is.
Are there gonna be machines in that space?
Yes, two washing machines, two dryers.
So do you see what I'm saying in terms of when I look at the plan here and what I can gather, the space you're talking about is in here.
Correct.
But it doesn't show on here that that's, I mean, that's the, the item that we're adding to the site, but it doesn't show on the plan.
Well, I was, it was already permitted. It already had a permit. And we opened the permit, what was it, or how did I?
The space had a permit, but I guess, does it, is the machine count changing?
But the space doesn't show on here and this is what we're actually looking at is this addition which shows on the site plan, but doesn't, I mean, I understand what you mean by wash and fold, I don't, but the drawing here should at least indicate to scale that this is where the addition is being put on, even if the...
Perimeter.
No, yeah, but I'm looking at, it's on this, but I'm trying to relate this existing building to what is the adder-on section and the adder-on section doesn't reflect any place on any of these as to where it is. So that's what...
It's highlighted on Leslie's, I can see it right there.
He's talking about the interior.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about how this, which I don't know that we really have any...
Speaking, speaking...
The interior is not within the scope of the site plan.
This is separate.
Guys, the site, the interior is not within the scope of the site plan.
But the correlation between the existing building and the addition to the building should, should be shown on this elevation. I mean, one of the questions I had, and again, maybe you can tell me, it's not something that's important, but the, the points of ingress and egress, so where the doors and walks and things would be?
Right.
Okay. I can't relate those to what is on here. I mean, this here says entry point right here.
But it's not gonna be a door to the outside from that area.
Well, how do people get in here?
Because they get from the main entrance. There's a walkway to that area.
So they're entering over here?
Yeah, right here.
Or entering here?
Yeah. This is a walkway.
Yeah, so there's no...
So this is where they're coming into?
Yeah.
Door, the wash and fold.
Yeah.
Or here. And then what's this entrance?
Okay, you're really getting confused.
All right, this is gonna be entrance, this is getting to egress door.
This is public.
That's gonna be the public entrance to laundromat.
Okay, so this here is the public entrance?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So that we know where that is. Okay. That needs to be identified by you. This is what here?
That goes into the wash and fold.
Yes, which is back here?
Which is back here, which nobody has access to where they come and stop.
Well, so a person is here for wash and fold and here is to use the machine?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so that helps and, and maybe this entrance should also be labeled wash and fold entrance only, okay? And public entrance to, to laundromat. Okay? Yes, it's...
Apologies.
No, there's no apologies necessary. When you work on a project and you know things, sometimes things that are common knowledge to you are not as clear to someone else looking at it and that's all I'm trying to clarify is entrance and exit because then this parking here correlates more sense to where the public could be coming in. Okay?
And there's also an ingress door for, on the back.
Okay, but this is out of the wash.
Yes, yes.
And there's a door here, so in an emergency, someone could, could get out any of those doors.
Yes.
Okay, I just... So you will have to identify those.
So which entrances are...
There's an entrance here on this side of the building which says entrance and this will be the public entrance to the laundromat. There's an entrance through here. This will be the entrance for the wash and fold, which will be in the addition, but not accessible to the people to bring in the laundry for wash and fold. Okay.
The concern with the entrances is not, with respect to the interior, that's the building department. The concern of the planning board, the interest of the planning board in the entrances and exits is how they relate to the outside, how they relate to parking and traffic and external...
And safety.
Safety, outside. Everything inside the building is building department. So we're only concerned that people are leaving these places, you know, where that had at least the parking lots and the safe egress from their, you know, for the building to parking spaces. Once they get in the building, it's, it's outside, but it's either for...
The layout is outside, but the use would correspond to the parking, which we've decided the three to five spaces would be met, but that use...
Wait, the use, yeah, but do you need the specific layout and all that?
No, I'm not talking about the specific layout of the machines and anything like that. This wall along here is the dryer location.
Correct.
And it mentions someplace in the documents that I wrote about a venting system.
Yes.
Where will that venting system vent?
Right behind the outside.
Out this, out this way?
Back wall, yes.
Okay. Can you give me, or give the board any idea of what we're talking about in terms of noise? We had an application previously that the board expressed some concerns and this was actually a more commercial area.
Is what, is what it is. It's a louver, it's a three foot by three foot louver door. So when the dryers kick on, you have to bring in air. So it just opens up, allows air to come in.
And how is it vented? That's, that's incoming air?
That's incoming air. The dryers get, like, the dryer vent and it has no other reason for noise. Or there may be airflow.
So there's gonna be?
Pretty exhausting.
A dryer vent for every dryer that's along the side of the wall?
Yes, on the back side.
And how is it vented? Is it vented in one?
No, it's individual vents, eight inch vents that go through the wall.
So they go directly out, they're venting directly out?
Each dryer is directly vented?
Yeah, it's like dryer at home.
Well, they're different.
So they're only gonna vent when they're in use? Each dryer is only gonna be blowing air out when they're in use?
Correct.
The reason why I asked the question, because there's approximately 30 feet between there and the adjacent property.
Property line, yes.
And property line and my concern is, which I don't know that the resident is here, but concern about the fact about noise that may be generated by this in terms of the property next door's residential.
Yeah, I spoke to them. The, the house is actually right here and faxing towards that.
Okay, so the house is more up towards the front?
More towards the street, yeah.
And what did they say to you? Anything?
When is it open?
They, they expressed concerns about noise.
Not at all.
Okay. Okay, you said you've seen the letter from the fire department.
Yes.
Have you responded to that letter?
I actually spoke to Phil about it.
It's, it's recommendations.
Well, it's, it is recommendations, but there is some legitimate questions in there. I guess the first legitimate question I have is, you talk about natural gas and there isn't no natural gas. It would have to be propane.
Correct.
Okay, so one of my questions with the propane is, are they gonna be above ground tanks or below ground tanks?
Below ground.
Okay, can you, would you please identify on, no, you're gonna, what I'm, we're gonna ask is that you take the site plan and incorporate on the site plan that you have where things are going to be. Okay?
There's one, there's one there down underground and I'm gonna move further back, away from that.
Okay, so it's, again, for the benefit of knowing where they are for this and as well as any future aspects, you take the site plan you have here, add the things about new parking, add the things about the entrances to it, add the aspect that this, this is the addition. We understand now it's wash and fold here and we don't, the use inside as been said is not an issue.
Are you adding storage tanks or propane tanks or is it the same tank you're just moving?
I'm adding two for the...
Okay, so there'll be additional tanks.
You're adding two, so there'll be three total?
Yes.
Okay.
They're not marked.
They're not marked in plans. Okay.
What about dumpsters? Is where I should have? That is something that you wanna be aware of and how they relate to the parking because we've had places where, like at the gas stations where they have propane for sale separately, they're gonna put up bollards.
Yeah, bollards would be required.
There would be required. Okay. That shouldn't be on the plan, like, where you have the protection vehicles. Dumpsters or any, and any other things outside the building, storage?
There's two dumpsters here and there's an existing shed.
Okay, and so you're not adding?
No.
There's an existing shed and a dump. Is that what this is here? What is this?
I believe that might be the shed.
Container entrance.
So is this new or is this existing?
Existing.
It's dumpster, yeah.
Okay, can you, can you add to this an existing dumpster so we know what that is? Is it, it's not real clear answers Jennifer's question, this is, and one dumpster will be sufficient for what you're doing?
There's, there's two dumpsters there.
There's two in here?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we know what the minimum distance has to be between a parking and where the tanks are up there?
I know offhand, I think it's five feet from structure or property line, but I mean, if you put them off to the side there or the back of the building, then the bollards wouldn't be required, I don't think.
We're gonna put bollards anyways.
Yeah, I mean, my, my concern would be that some truck or back end of the delivery driver is right over the top of them.
Hundred percent, yeah.
Yeah, and, and again, should there ever be a issue, like I said, of expansion or a fire, is your people know what?
Whatever, yeah. Agreed.
Did you, the, the letter from the fire department asked about a Knox box. Do you know what that is?
I do.
And have you?
I spoke to Phil. Phil, I think I know this.
Okay. The one thing that, another thing which I thought on the site plan would be helpful, particularly going back to the comment you made about that this was a dirt area. There's really no way of telling on the site plan where the limits of paving or paved area and where, where vegetation is. I appreciate the fact that, pointing out the house is further to the front than it is back here. But this does not give me any feeling or, the board members, any feeling whatsoever as to what this area is, whether it's turf, whether it's paving, where the paving limits are. I mean, the zoning and the aspect of it being already a parking area here is important, because the zoning says if you put in more than X number of parking spaces, you have to pave them. And some of this area is paved.
Yes.
And some of the area may not be paved.
Correct.
But be a material other than a vegetative cover. So that would be something that should be identified.
Yeah, so the new, the new area, that could be gravel, right, until, does it have to be paved?
With six spaces, I believe that...
So these, these are already paved, these first three?
Okay, and, okay, so again, that goes back to the issue of determining when you, when you bring in a revised site plan that clearly identifies it. Let's say this is paved, this is concrete and that's asphalt or whatever it may be, and that this is dirt over here, and the dirt limits is to here, and this here is all grass, lawn or whatever. And if there's any vegetation that exists along this line, over here, there's basically no space, the line is right.
But there is vegetation.
Okay, just to enhance it, I mean, with the site plan review, there's a whole list of things we should be going through. I think we've discussed most of them, in that it's such a small building here, and I'm not sure how you address the drainage, what are you doing with the water that runs off the roof?
What do you mean, it runs off the roof?
Well, the roof, it's a pitch roof.
Yes.
It's just gonna run off to the...
To the ground.
Yes, okay, all right. My suggestion would be, and I'll help the other board members, is that we table this application, asking the applicant to revise slash update the site plan, showing, as we said, the limits of pavement, identifying how, what the pavement is, concrete, asphalt, gravel, identifying the areas that are vegetation, showing turf area and any shrubbery or whatever, showing the locations of the propane tanks, both where the existing will be moved to and where the two new ones are going to be, identifying the existing shed slash dumpster, whatever this is. If there's a shed on the property that's not shown on this, it should be shown, okay? And identifying the entrances to what will be associated with this laundromat and this other door that comes out here, okay? Is there anything else that anybody?
You should just go through the checklist and things that you, you can waive, things that aren't required, but I mean, there is a list on the empty recycling.
Yeah, I mean, I...
So, just to make sure they haven't overlooked anything, so that when they come back, they know what they have to bring in, and they don't find, oh, what we needed to know this too. So a lot of the stuff they're not gonna need to do, but you should go through it and identify that they have to do, what things they do and what they do.
As I had mentioned earlier, there is a checklist for site plan here, okay?
Before you, before we go through that, can I just, do we need to check with DPW about whether we can accommodate this much water usage?
The applications always get sent out to all the department heads, so the DPW got it and made no comment.
Okay. Okay, so these are the things that are supposed to be submitted for site, not patient for site plan. And we can launch them as we normally do and just say yes or no.
Francis, can I make a copy of that and then I'll check them all off so we can...
Certainly can.
It's on the checklist that I created.
Yeah, she's got it already in the packet.
All right, thanks.
Didn't even notice.
Got it. I just copied the pieces right from the playbook, I'll have that checklist setting to every applicant.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, title of drawing including name and address of applicant and person responsible for preparation of such drawing. North arrow, so do we, do we need that? And basically, the title says Chad and Body Works. Is that, that's no longer what the title of the drawing is? Okay, so that should be taken out and upgraded to say what the title is. And the name and address of the applicant should be included on here.
I mean, the title could just be, you know, site plan for fifty-one, fifty-three George Street, just so we know what property and the current date.
Okay, there's a north arrow, graphic scale and date. There is a north arrow on here, a graphic scale on here. I'm not sure that you, you should update the date, so it's reflective of this drawing.
Well, they can't update a date that it hasn't been redrawn.
I don't think we're asking them to do a new survey. They just need to make sure that this updated information is on this...
What they're submitting is reflective of what is happening now and dated now. Okay, the boundaries of the property lines by the scale, the boundaries are on there. Any existing water courses? There's no water courses, so you don't have to do any. So let's do this the right way. So with A, the title of drawings including name and address of applicant, person responsible for preparing such drawing, yes, you will have to do that in the site plan. North arrow graphic, scale and date, you don't need to do the north arrow or the graphic scale, but you do need to put the date in which you are adding these things to the drawing. Boundaries of the property lines plotted to scale, that is already on the drawing, you don't need to do that. Existing water courses, there are none, you don't need to do that. Grading and drainage plan showing existing and proposed contours, there's no grading or drainage being done, you don't need to do that. Location, design and type of construction, proposed use and exterior dimensions of all structures. Basically, it's the structure that we're talking about that's being added to the building.
That's already been approved, though.
The building itself, only, there's only a foundation. There's no building. It says the footers are there.
Yeah, that addition was...
Was approved, and it just never constructed.
Okay, but you still should show the location of it as they have on here, so we know where that, where that is, which is already on it.
Yeah, so he doesn't need to do it.
You don't need to do that, okay? Description of efforts made to integrate the new structure within the village's architecture and character.
It's not a new structure.
That's, that's not an issue. Location, design, type of construction of all parking and truck loading areas, showing egress and access, access. You do need to show what you have on the parking you have here, but identify what's the new parking. And what kind of vehicles, do you have trucks and things coming here to make deliveries and stuff? You don't expect that.
Just propane.
Just, just propane and the garbage.
The garbage.
Garage truck, okay. So you don't need to show that. Type and volume of traffic expected to be generated, that's nothing you have to address. Provisions for pedestrian access, those would be the points we talked about in egress and... Location of waste collection containers, that's the dumpsters, we've asked you to show that and identify it better. Location of any outdoor storage, will there be any outdoor storage?
No, just...
Just gonna make sure the shed is on the map.
The shed, yeah.
I'm sorry. Location, location, design and construction materials for all existing or proposed site improvements, including drains, culverts, retaining walls and fences, you're not proposing or doing any of those, so that doesn't need to be addressed. Description and method of sewage disposal location, you're connected to the existing, okay? Description and method of securing public water, that's not, it does not have to be addressed. Location of fire and emergency zones, including location of fire dungeons. From this site, can you identify, it's gonna be along the frontage here, how many feet, let's say it is from this property line or that property line or across the street, as to where the...
Where the fire hydrant is.
The fire hydrant is, okay.
Any market idea?
Yeah, I mean, you could, what you can end up doing is, is let's say, take an arrow and say fire hydrant, three hundred and fifty feet. Okay.
He's the superintendent on the road, so you might even already know it, fire hydrant.
Location, design and construction materials, all energy distribution facilities, including electrical, gas and solar energy. These are all gonna be run by electric, I'm assuming, are you, I mean...
Electric and gas.
And gas. Do you have to put in new overhead lines or?
No.
Thing, okay, so you don't get to address that?
There's a four hundred ampere, three phase service there.
Location of fire emergency zones, I will leave that up to the fire. Oh, did I skip our... I can even...
Signs, location, size, design and type, construction of all proposed signs.
Signs, and that was my...
So you write a sign on it?
There's a sign here, the existing sign.
Yeah, there's three signs on that post. I'm taking one of them off and putting my sign there.
Okay, you will have to show us what the sign looks like, how it reads. Okay, so in other words, if this sign post here, let's say, is, and I know it's a large existing, one has been there for quite a while, so let's say that it's three foot down here and eight foot here, and you're going to end up eliminating the one on the bottom and putting in a new sign, I don't know what you put in, then you need to provide us with the dimensions and what it's going to say. And if it's more than just black and white letters that are posted on, because I remember, isn't it something that things get? Or is it, how would the sign, how would the sign be installed?
Only if it's eliminated.
If it's not eliminated. It is lighted.
It is lighted.
It is lighted.
So then, then you do need to provide us as much information as you can.
Yeah, it's an American flag banner that says the laundromat.
The content doesn't matter, I'm just looking to light it behind this.
It's a enclosed box, and light through the side, and the side will be in, both sides of it.
Okay, so what's...
Is that what it is currently?
Yes.
Yeah. So what the sign says and the size. Location, design, outdoor lighting facilities. Now, will there be lighting out here for, since the laundromat will be used probably during hours in the dark?
Correct.
Will there be lighting out here?
There's a street pole with a streetlight that...
Where, where is located?
Okay, you need to show that then.
You guys will give me a...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Identification of the location and the amount of building areas proposed for retail sales or similar commercial activity.
But this does not actually have the square footage listed for this.
Yeah, it's twelve by eighteen.
Yeah, it's, it's, two hundred and sixteen square feet, okay, I told them, but it should indicate, this has the square footage, this has the square footage, you should put the square footage in here, all right?
General landscaping plan and planning schedule.
Thank you. So are you doing any landscaping? Okay, so if you're not doing anything, you don't have to show me that. Estimated project construction schedule?
So Francis, I'm sorry, did you, does it need to say he's not doing? On the plan, should it say no landscaping?
Yes, on the plan, it should say no landscaping, planting.
I mean, I had to reflect grass, because it was...
Yes, I understand, that's... So the next one is the project construction schedule. If you put on here what your, projected project schedule will be, okay?
For opening, you mean?
Yeah, for doing the work in open.
When it comes to records, I'm not hearing it, it's really not...
Record of application for approval status of all necessary permits from state and county officials. No, that does not have to be done. Identification of any state or county permits required for the project's execution, there's nothing there, that does not have to be done. Stormwater pollution plan, there's not enough development or subject to that, that doesn't have to be done. It's one acre disturbance is what the requirement is. And other elements that go to the project development, continued necessary by the plan for the other things that we talked about on here, the entrance of the doors and other, other things that we...
Yeah, I think this would be type two for a secur, because it's not like the building anything, it's just reuse of it, an existing commercial. One thing, though, it actually does have to go to the county, because it's on Route two or three, because it's a site plan review.
I was just gonna ask that.
So that doesn't, that should be fine, because maybe on third Tuesday each month, so by next month, when we come back here, we send it over, this is state law, when there's any special use site plan, it takes place with five hundred feet of the state or county rule, it has to be referred to the county planning department. They will have no issue, but I'm long for it to set up here. But then you know on third Tuesday, so we'll send it over...
We'll say that you don't have to do anything.
They'll meet on third Tuesday, and we meet the following on the fourth Monday, so they, they will act on it. They guarantee they, this is not a concern to us. We get that back and then board can have it next month.
Generally, I mean, to not have any fears, generally, the response we get back to is, it's a local decision, it's under county, white and orange. I can pretty much assure you that that's pretty much what we're gonna say with this little addition on the back that's previously looked at. But it is formally, as you're saying, it's green, five hundred feet of the state highway has to be sent, forty yards of it. So when that site plan is updated and that, and do that as soon as possible, so this can be sent down.
Yeah, I'll have it.
Okay.
Right, that's the thing, they do need, they're supposed to get the full application, so as soon as you can make those additions to the plan and we send it over to them, maybe in ten days ahead, but we're, I mean, they're just mad. Coming last week, I guess.
They have time?
Yes, so there's plenty of time. Actually, they're meeting tomorrow, but they, whatever. They need attending today, so there's plenty of time to get there before their June meeting.
So we need a motion to table this and refer, refer to the county and table this?
You have the option, that is public hearing on it, that's up to the planning boards. At your discretion, or they can put a public hearing on it, once you want to vote out the neighbors. That's up to you.
I don't really see a need for a public hearing. It's a small addition, it is on the back and on the side. Yes, and I did have, I personally have two sentences in it about the vents and the noise. I don't, I don't believe that's as much of an issue as I may think it is. If it is, we certainly let you know.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't see a need to have a public hearing on this. So we have a motion to table until next meeting.
And also the...
And refer to the county. For a second?
Yes, McGee.
Hi, second, okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Robert Davis, property owner, and Derington Incorporated.
Robert Davis? Oh, you're Robert Davis? Oh, my God, I'm so sorry. That's so crazy.
What I would ask you is to basically, in a few minutes, and, yeah, you know, I asked a lot of people what you're requesting, and you all didn't forget it maybe here.
So, I'm, I'm with Danny Harringtons, obviously, right down the road here, so basically, there's just a few smaller projects we'd like to get done this year. But because we're part of the storage open zone, obviously, everything has to be run with you guys and actually is on there, so. Essentially, what we'd like to do, we put in a fence last year. Just on the, yeah, on the front side of it, we'd like to enclose that around, it's not the property line, but around the top of the ravine that's over there. And we would like to put in some racking underneath the warehouse overhang, where we already stack material up that high end line, but. It'll help us clean stuff up.
So that site plan you guys are pulling out is the one that's here, and then the, sorry, I'm Michael, I'm with Compton Architecture. This, the fence that Rob was just talking about is gonna be approximately here, and then go all the way to the edge of this building here. And then they wanted to do outdoor storage racks here, here, underneath the overhang of the existing warehouse, that is photographed here and here. So that they can essentially get the material up off the ground and have more room for storage.
The fence on the back, you already have a fence back there?
So.
Like, kind of.
There's.
Part of all, part of.
The barbed wire on top, I don't know why there's barbed wire, faces the wrong direction, and it's like eight to nine feet in heights. So I know it's not exactly what we have for the front, so we have basically got a special dispensation to do a seven foot fence, even though that's not typically what we would want there, and it's black, whereas that stuff is just plain gallons of metal.
Okay, and then you're not, you're not putting, the new fence you wanna put up is not on the property line, what's gonna happen between the new fence and the property line in the back?
So essentially, back here, it like falls down the hill, and that's wooded, and that's where there's the ravine.
Okay.
So we want to keep the fence up on top of the hill more so where the actual, like the extent of the useful property is.
Okay.
And we will have a man door back there in part, so that we can still get out there, just in case we have to take care of it.
The, there was a little reference to some little building type thing being in, in the corner of the building, is that in the interior?
Oh, yes.
Is that in the inside?
Yeah, that's inside.
Inside, okay, that's what I thought I was reading, but I just wanted to make sure that I answered it correctly. I believe, and I'll go with Ken, this will also have to be sent to the county.
No, because it's just historic review.
But it's within five hundred feet.
If it's just historic review, is that the reason for?
I believe so.
We don't have to.
It's, yeah, because it's just.
I think there's an exemption for historic things, they're all subject only to historic review.
Okay. All right, is there any other questions in the boardroom?
The, this, on the building where you wanna put racks in, do you, did you provide a picture of what that looks like?
It should be with those pictures, we email it over, but if you don't have it, it's on you.
This is existing?
Looks like this.
Oh, is it this one?
Yes, it looks like this.
Yes, but presumably, when there's wood stacked on that, and the other materials, you're not gonna see.
You probably won't see the majority of it, you probably won't see the orange supports and the most of the blue uprights.
Okay, so the materials stacked there.
I don't know if they're being fashioned that way for safety colors or what, obviously, we don't love orange and blue, those aren't exactly our colors, but, you know, that's unfortunate.
But which, when there's materials on there, you're really only gonna see the end of it.
Mostly the uprights and the ends of the arms, but.
I think any other questions in the boardroom?
Oh, just, on, on your, the short environmental assessment form, number five, there should be, you have urban, rural, and commercial checked. There should also be residential, because you back up to houses on Cambridge Street or off of Cambridge Street.
I mean, it's, that's at the bottom of the ravine, but yeah, they, there are part of the back, down the hill and through the woods, they're there.
Is it that far?
It's not, it's like, it's a pretty steep hill, so it's, you know, it looks harder from the top, but it's probably down into their back property lines. Probably fifty, a hundred feet.
Well, we had also checked under twelve, is the project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites? On the New York City Historic Preservation Arms, blah, 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 you checked yes, and I'm wondering what archaeological.
The bank, it's the bank, the transportation. Because they had to check, they had checked out.
No, that's, no, that's A, that's twelve A, is checked yes, but twelve B is also checked yes, and I'm just, there is no archaeological.
Oh. No, I don't think so.
It's something that.
But it's, I think, believe the bank is on the historic registry.
So you think it was because of the bank?
Yeah, because I remember last time when they came for the fence, that would.
Okay. I saw, we didn't need it, yes, I just didn't know what was being referred to there. I think that's, that was six.
Okay, I'll make a motion then. The Village of Chatham Planning Board approves of the application number twenty twenty five.
Just before you go.
How much, please? Seven feet. Seven feet, we, we approved the seven feet two years ago in the front.
We'll address it.
Maybe that.
Ken?
I'll address it.
Sorry.
It has to go to the zoning.
Uh, yes.
It has to go to zoning board, it's, it's over the.
I didn't realize it was seven feet.
Yeah, it could only be six feet on the curves, it wouldn't be two.
Yeah, I think they, yeah, not, I'll look in the file, but they could take.
I'm sure they, they did, but unfortunately, that's just, the planning board can't.
Is it the New York?
I was saying that was six feet.
So six feet's the only height that's allowed, and so we have to get there.
Okay, I'll make a motion, turn the motion again. The Village of Chatham Planning Board approves of application twenty twenty five dash eighty one for Six Depot Square, Chatham, New York, for the installation of the, of metal storage racks and the installation of black chain link fence as noted. The approval is based on the application for building slash use permit dated five, six, twenty twenty five, application for site plan review, short environmental assessment form, and the overall site plan sheet, A zero zero one dated zero five nineteen twenty twenty five, and the five photos attached to the application. Approval of the black vinyl channeling fence is only for the materials and location, not for the seven foot height. A variance approval from the zoning board of appeals shall be required prior to the installation of the fence.
Second.
Before you leave, also, they submit the EAF, you actually have to issue a negative declaration that it does not create any significant. The EAF is what they put in, but you then have to make a determination on the basis of the EAF they put in, that it will not have any significant adverse environmental impacts. That's, I mean, that's the determination you have to make to conclude the secret part.
Okay, so.
Did you find that to be the case?
In, in addition to the motion I made?
Well, it's not in addition, that has to precede the motion, so you have to take the first motion, I'll take one in a minute, sorry, but that's the order.
So, make a motion that the short environmental assessment form for this application has been determined to be a type two.
Not, yes.
And has no significant.
No, sorry, no, it's not type two, it's an unlisted, but you've determined that it'll have no significant impact, you look at it, it has no significant adverse environmental impacts.
So it's an unlisted action with no.
Significant.
Significant.
Adverse environmental impacts.
No significant adverse environmental impacts.
So it's a type two, so it's, sorry, so it's a negative declaration.
So it's a type two.
No, it's not a negative declaration. Now you can go on to the, acting on the application itself.
So I, I've already repeated the motion, I don't see any need to repeat it again. Do I have, did we have a second to motion?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, you do well, you have to get that variance from the CD right.
Yep.
Does this have to be signed?
Next application we propose is Melissa Davis, Chatham Rick LLC, oh, there we go, she heard us, LLC, thirty three Main Street. Just take up the minimum due responsibility.
Is that his line?
Yeah, that's, I didn't see access.
Oh, it's good, it's not as yellow as, as.
Oh, yeah, see, yeah, see the difference?
Yeah, yeah, and that, that's why, I'll go back, it's important to have the actual slides. So would you just take a few seconds and explain why you're here?
Yes, I'm here because we are replacing the awning fabric on the existing hardware, and this umbrella fabric is the fabric that we chose to replace the existing awning with.
Anybody have any questions with the applicant?
No.
I have just one question, which I think we'll have to answer, but I just, in terms of the awning, will there be any symbols, names, letters, et cetera, on the awning?
No.
Just want to correct, some awnings do come in and they end up putting something on it which constitutes a sign, I just wanted to make sure that is not the case.
Correct.
Thank you.
One other, I seem to find these, question number four on the, the assessment forms, it's also residential, you're, you're, it's not, you're just, not near a commercial, there are also the residential, there is there, our apartments, so. Oh, okay.
You don't need the EAF, I mean, this is a type two, you don't need to do any, any seizure for changes, but.
You know, it might be helpful if somehow the building inspector and you could get together, so that if they're not in the packet, then we don't have to worry about it. Because when it's in the packet, it does make confusion for the board sometimes versus, we need you to do action on it, other times we don't.
Well.
I think it's always gotta be filled out.
But if it's not needed, why?
Well, you have to, every.
It's a law, you have to.
You have to evaluate it against, well, actually, that's true, it is in the code, you have to submit it, because until you actually, you can't make decisions until you know what the project is, and and there's, sometimes there are interpretations of whether someone calls it the acceptance, et cetera, so it's not that, always that clear cut, I mean, there, that's what we generally ask people to put them in. And if it is in the code, yes, it's supposed to put it in.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
It's possible, you know, it's possible that we could come up with a list of certain things that we don't need them for, for example.
Signs.
Signs, we did it actually recently for minor subdivisions and boundary line adjustments.
Yeah.
It's, it is possible to pick, put together a list of things that are so trivial in their nature that they never need them, we can make up that kind of list. Because a board is entitled and allowed to make its own list of type two actions, so it might be something, there are things that, you know, we routinely see that just don't need it.
I, I'm just thinking, would make it easier for the board, easier for the applicant, I realize that it's limited, but it's even being limited, it still makes it easier for.
Yeah, but I mean, the code actually specifically says it's supposed to put it in the EAF, so there'd have to be some, you know, like official non-behaviors that have, you can't just say, don't bother.
Okay. I'll make a motion then. The Village of Chatham Planning Board approves of application twenty twenty five dash zero eight two, the thirty three Main Street, Chatham, New York, for the installation of the new awning fabric to the existing awning frame. This approval is based on the application for building use permit dated five, nine, twenty five, application for site plan review, the short environmental assessment form dated five, nine, twenty five, and the following, photographs of building, the side showing awning location and appearance, actual sample of awning material, sun umbrella, awning stripes. I'm going to go by partition mark, number four, seven, one, five, dash, zero, 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 letter of authorization from Chatham Rick LLC for Melissa Davis to be represented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yeah, aye, aye.
Location's approved.
Thank you, thank you.
This application is iconic engineering DPC, property owners Trangle Theater, forty six, forty eight Main Street. It's historic review for moving poster boxes from the exterior of the building to the interior.
It's just one sheet, we're seeking an amendment for our original approval, the historic wood poster cases were originally installed right at the entryway. They uncovered the original patina on the wood poster cases, and they want to preserve them, and so they'd like to move them interior, to the interior lobby, and that'll be with all the other store metal variegated on the display wall inside to preserve the hundred year old wood poster cases. So on the left here, you can see what our original approved elevation was, and on the right, you can just see the wood poster pieces now.
I brought with me the pictures that the applicant had initially shown, this part of the original application, showing what the foundation looked like originally, and what it looks like now. And tell me again, why are we moving these?
So actually, I have some pictures, I'm sure you guys, so these are the original poster cases on the building, and they're made out of wood. And they uncovered the original patina on the poster cases, and rather than painting it and weatherproofing it, they are proposing to move them inside so that you can see the original patina on the poster cases.
Will they be all the way inside on the interior, or will they be in the, like, alcove area?
Um, no, it'll be all the way on the interior, so you come in the front doors, you have the first set of double doors, they're gonna be open most of the time anyway, so you probably will be able to see them, but they're not gonna be displayed right on the front.
Are they gonna be replaced with something else on the front and going for posters, or there are no posters?
No, there were, actually, in the original presentation, there are, in the fifties, they put up aluminum poster cases, and then those have been replaced throughout the years. We are replacing those, that has not changed from our original condition.
But this is where they were, so you can see, this was just, and you already walked in.
So wait, they were in the alcove, like, that's like.
Yeah, in the alcove when you came in, this is the door now that.
Oh, I see.
That goes to ticket office, and this is the matching door on the other side, when you see those arches, that's actually inside the building. You can show where the exterior wall is going into the exit.
Now I get it now, yeah.
So if you look, the poster thing is right there, which is here.
So this is that first set of double doors, so out here was the, you know, the entry hallway. So, out here was the, you know, the entry hallway. And then, the first set of double doors here separated the theater from the front lobby. But they're proposing, so there's like another bay that's back here, they're proposing just to move them inside. But so that they'll be protected, and ideally, you'll have another hundred years out of them. But that you can see the original finish on the poster cases.
Okay, so these are not, are there still poster cases on the front of the building?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you're leaving the aluminum, they're aluminum-framed poster cases, right?
Yep.
And those are staying?
Yes.
And what are you doing to those, refresh your memory, what is being done to those aluminum cases?
Uh, they're being replaced with new ones. Which has already been approved, with new aluminum poster cases.
That are gonna be...
That were on the front facade.
That the color is not gonna be aluminum colored, is that correct?
Correct, they'll be brown to match the trim, actually, they're painting it right now.
I think the one thing that concerned me about what you're requesting, and I understand to a degree about it, is that these are the only poster casings on the building that are historically accurate to the building. And now, they'll be inside the building and not be visible to people when they pass by. You know, I, I almost, and I, I understand what you're saying. I almost was thinking that it would be nice if those two poster casings were moved out to the front on either side of the entrance, and the aluminum ones, two remaining aluminum ones were on the far side.
They're too large to sit on the front of the building in that orientation. The storefront windows on either side are too large, and the space left over wouldn't accommodate these poster cases. Which is why they were always installed between the storefront doors.
So, they're different sizes on the front, yeah.
And they're, and they're wood, so you...
Yes.
Yeah.
Their lifespan will be short if they're exposed to the elements.
Yeah, that's just...
But they're different sizes entirely, so you can't just swap them out.
See, it's interesting, when I look at this here, and, and, for your benefit, when I look at this here, because this is what we're talking about, and I look at what the building looked like originally, it certainly looks like spaces as equal to, not...
But there's not, I mean, you're looking at a photo, there's not dimensions there?
No, and, and, um, there's what it looks like down. You're right, there's no, no dimensions.
I brought this.
You certainly meant, it's why I brought it, because I felt it was important to relate to what is existing and what is being changed. I'm torn between the aspect of taking something that is more accurate to the historic appearance of the building and making it inside.
They are slightly protected underneath the, you know, the entryway there. But they have not really been taken care of over the years, and they haven't exposed to the elements. And this is, you know, the most bare bones that are in restoration currently. But what they're concerned is that they, if they were to put them back outside, they have to have some sort of kerco or finish, or something that has to go back on them. And after years of being repainted, they lost a lot of the detail that they already have. And they would hate to cover all of that back up.
But these are not the same.
No, 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 they're not the same.
They're not, these, these are not those.
No, I'm, I'm not saying that they're the same, but what I'm saying is, these are much more in keeping historically than the aluminum ones that was replaced. This is the only one on the exterior, the ones on the exterior of the building that are reflective of the building architecture when it was built.
I mean, I think, I'm gonna err on the side of preserving the historic artifact inside rather than risking it being destroyed outside.
I would agree, and since the aluminum frames, the aluminum frames have been there for how many years? Since the fifties or so?
Right, and they're not, they're still there, or they're, they're replacing white, but there, there's still going to be posters on the front of the building.
Let me ask this question. And I understand where both of the other board members are coming from. With the aluminum ones that are out there, is there any way of detailing in terms of the top of that box, could be something created to reflect the appearance of the top of the poster case that you're wanting to move inside? Like this detail here? I mean, this here is a box.
Correct.
Okay. What really, in, in the fact that whether the box is wood or aluminum, particularly, much better that the aluminum is going to be colored more blending in with the building. What is the potential for putting the top on it? So, at least it has some reflection of an architectural element that was at one time on that building.
With these particular poster cases, not very likely they are solar poster cases. Because part of our original application was to remove much of the wiring and, I don't know, additional things that have been tacked on the front facade. And so, the, they're powered by the sun, so that there's no exterior conduit being run on the front facade of the building. So, there's no place to mount a detail such as this.
I mean, you're, so what you're saying to me is that you couldn't take a piece of wood, maybe now with all the carving there, I'm not asking about the carving, but taking a piece of wood that matched that shape and mount it simply on top of the aluminum box? So that, and paint it so it's the same color, so it looks like it's more in keeping with the building?
Possibly, but there's like a mini solar panel on top of those aluminum poster cases. So that it'll power the light, right?
Well, may, maybe even if you mounted it to the wall and left a gap, I mean, I, I...
Well, but currently, what we are already approved for the poster cases in the front, they're not proposing changing any of those, so we're, we need to focus on the ones that are...
I understand, I understand that, but, you know, I, I'm at a point where I don't really want to vote against this, even though I, I understand what you're saying. I'm trying to come up with a way that, at least for me, I can vote for, for this removal with the condition that you do something extra above and beyond that we approved with the other boxes, so that they're more in keeping with what you've removed in terms of, of visual appearance, not the same materials, not anything else. I understand the solar aspect to it. I, e, e, even, you know, could you, could you, I, I, I don't, the, the ones on the front, I don't wanna focus on because you have a technology problem that isn't gonna work by adding stuff to it, but could you not replace those on the exterior with ones that would keep, still keep the look,
but obviously, they're not made out of wood, so you still have poster cases in that alcove?
Um, potentially.
I could even give you another option, recognizing what you're saying about the solar. You could paint on the wall that outline and, and paint it so that it looked like there was something there flush with the wall, so it would have no impact on the solar panel. It would actually be painted to, to the wall itself.
It's textured plaster, that might be complicated?
Yeah, I don't think that's a good idea. I think it's gonna be obviously fake.
Yeah, but here's, here's the thing too, is that these were, these themselves were never on the front of the building.
Right.
What was on the front, what was in those photographs you had earlier, which was a completely different poster case, they have been gone for years. I don't even know when they were removed, but the, the aluminum frames have been up there for decades. I'm assuming, they look like they're from the sixties, fifties, sixties, which is what the building had, which is what it has looked like now for forty years, fifty years, whatever it's, sixty years, I don't know, whatever it's been. So, you're want, you're, you're suggesting putting something that has actually not been on the front of the building before. These were not on the front of the building.
No.
And, and I know you're looking to make some kind of a reference to, to the historical nature of the building, but, but the original, in those photographs, the original poster cases are not these cases.
Right.
I, I understand that, but these cases are all that's left that looks at that building from an architectural point of view. I think if, if, if we were maybe to have been presented with the aspect of those front cases were being removed or altered, we would have looked at something different. Here's a case of where something's being removed, and I understand completely what you're saying in terms of why you want to remove it, I understand better than I did, ever did in the beginning. I just look at, I, like I said, the hard time of taking something that is in keeping with the building, that's been on the building for years, and putting it so it's not visible anymore versus doing something to modify the cases that were approved. And, yeah, I agree with you that, you know, the stuff might be hard to paint. I mean, even if you had a little piece of thin plywood or, or thin wood that you made look like shape and on top of the other box, would make those look a lot better than the aluminum boxes that they are.
Here's my other question for you, and I don't know, maybe this is out of line. The project is set to be finished in September, and they're actually painting the facade now, and all that stuff is being put up shortly, in the next couple of months, the marquee will be going up as well. In the effort of time, I guess what is, uh, what's a good solution, right? Because all the materials have already been ordered, a lot of those things are already being shipped here.
I mean, that's the reason why I, I altered from what I originally had said in terms of, okay, you know, putting a big wooden piece on the top of it when you talked about the solar aspect. It's what, I'm, I'm assuming the panel's gotta stick out probably about two inches or three inches from the wall.
Yeah, the poster case itself is about two inches deep, and so, the solar panel sticks out about a quarter of an inch past.
Is that behind or... It's behind.
It's all behind.
It's on top of it.
It's on top.
Yep.
So, when you're looking at the front, like, you're, you're, it overhangs slightly, but when you're looking straight on, you're not gonna really notice that there is a solar panel sitting on top of it, yeah?
No, it kinda look like a molding piece, you know, like a, kinda look like a trim piece.
And I guess that's what I'm looking at, something like a trim piece that you could...
I think we run the risk though of, you know, trying, you get kind of like part tuning when you try to make something look, you know, old-timey by making a modification like that. I think we should really focus on the poster cases that are being, that they want to move, and coming up with a solution for that space and not the space on the front that we've already approved. So, I would recommend, if we were to approve this, removing those historic cases and moving them into the interior, that there is a replacement poster case put in place. If possible, you know, have it, have some kind of detail on it. But I think also just having a blank wall where there was once a poster case also changes the look of that alcove. So, I would rather see a poster case than a blank wall. Given that, given that it's a movie theater.
Next to the door, you're talking about next to the door.
Exactly where that poster, where, where these are being removed from is now gonna be a blank wall on their proposal, and I would rather see a poster case there. Obviously, I understand moving these inside because you're preserving an artifact, but, you know, I think I would wanna see a poster case on the, in place of that rather than a blank wall.
And could you provide us with a detail of what that poster case would look like? Because I certainly don't wanna see another aluminum poster case like the ones in, in the front. We want something that has some architectural character to it that reflects...
Yeah, a gentleman who's restoring these could probably build something similar.
There's probably even something existed, because they make, they make all kinds of...
A replica, basically, so it may not have the same finite detail, but to an untrained eye, you may think... Yeah, it's in the same style.
Okay.
Because those are not illuminated, right?
No, and actually, it feels much cluttered, much more cluttered in real life than it does on these drawings. Because, like I said, the, the front facade is textured plaster, so, you know, the drawings are beautiful, and the drawings have clean lines, there's no such thing as a clean line at the cradle, as we're, as we're learning. So, you know, the, the space is gonna feel a lot different once it's cleaned up and painted, and there will be some more illumination in there, but those poster cases have never been illuminated. There's never been any illumination next to the front doors either. I think in 2010, they put in three recessed lights in the bottom of the beam, that's in the front here. So, but before then, there was no illumination on that alcove.
Okay, is there, did, part of the plan that was approved, is there a recessed light in the ceiling of that alcove?
Yes.
Uh, they're replacing, they're replacing the existing recessed lights.
Okay, so they're not adding?
No.
Okay, I mean, I would like to see an in-color rendering of that space, you know, if you can, that, you're saying that there's already a lot going on, and we're looking at a really clean representation, it's just a line drawing. So, is it, I would like to see, you know, a color rendering that would maybe illustrate your point that it's cluttered and got a lot going on in there.
Right, and they are painting the facade this week, you're all welcome to come stop by and do a look.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it's, so, let me see if I understand what you were saying. So, basically, we would approve of the removal of these distinct poster cases.
If they're replaced with a replica?
With, with the condition that they be replaced with a replica, um, poster case, and that the applicant provides us with a colored rendering of the space and the poster case.
Okay.
Is that...
I mean, I, I would wanna see the color rendering before we do final approval, because she's arguing that if there's a lot going on, we might actually appreciate a clean wall. But my recommendation obviously is to replace these with a replica.
Yeah, I mean, I can...
I'd like to see a color rendering. Or, or if the walls are painted this week, you know, go over there and stand there.
It's hard to see, there's fencing and stuff at the front, I, I tried to take a peek before I came...
I know some people, I can get you that.
And how are you standing on this?
I'm, I'm not so sure I need to see more poster cases next to the, next to the window, next to the door. What, what I sort of like to do is to approve the removal, moving these into, to the interior. And is there some way we can have a condition so that we can go look at it, we can go look at it while, when it's painted and see if it really wants a poster case in those, in those places? It may not, it may be to, I mean, these are arches, these arches are...
No, that's inside.
Yeah, that's inside, I know, but, yeah, I just, I, I, can we, can we...
I would, can I just add that we're not really there to decide what they like. They're just, they're deciding what is historically appropriate, so it isn't about what you like.
Yeah, right.
Right, and I, if I said like that, you're...
Well, I just wanted to be clear, it's not, you know, you're not really there to make your aesthetic judgments of what your preferences are. It's whether you think this is appropriate from a historical perspective to modify these, you know, what was there, or to remove a detail that was there without compensating for that. So, I think we should be focused on that and not so much about whether you, you know, you like it, whether not, they are not there, is, is it an appropriate historical modification?
So, then would you say that you would make a motion to approve of the removal of the existing poster cases?
To the interior?
Well, to, to the interior of the building. With the condition that the board will look at the space and at the next meeting, meet with the applicant and let them know whether in fe, how we will address that space as to whether they will have to come up with an historical element, poster board, to go back into the space, or whether nothing will have to be done. I'm looking to do a view.
Time's up.
Okay.
Okay with you?
So, we're, you want to approve the removal...
We'll approve the removal conditional, make a motion to approve the removal of the existing poster cases to be relocated into the interior of the building. With the condition that the applicant, that, that the board members will examine the lo, the area from which they've been removed and make a determination at the next meeting.
If they should be replaced, or not replaced?
Right. Right.
Okay, I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let you off then. So everybody's got their homework. Look at the space. Okay, we have one more item on the agenda. This item on the agenda, there's a misprint down here. The applicant is Katrina Wallen, 18 Bushnell Avenue, and it's for two lot line, boundary line adjustments.
So, I want to say, the name...
Yeah.
That was the last boundary line adjustment.
The name, okay.
All the other information except for the name, which...
Oh, I understand, yes.
Well, they printed another copy of the first page, or...
I printed, I printed...
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I sent in the reverse when I sent this to you.
Okay.
The front page, and delivered as a...
Two different names.
Okay.
This is Katrina Wallen. I'm Matt Bo, and I'm here, and I'm here tonight to present this application for boundary adjustments on the east and west side of the property of 18 Bushnell Avenue. The one on the east being property of Arthur Ross, and the one on the west, Timothy Lee, and...
Old Town. So, explain, just explain to us what happened.
Uh, well, and you may have something familiar of these.
I do. Just for the rest of the board member, 14 Bushnell Avenue is the house that I was raised and brought up in.
Okay.
Okay, so I know, and Katrina's been my, was my neighbor then for years.
Okay.
So I'm familiar with this.
That doesn't help me understand.
So what we're doing, what we're doing, maybe I'll step up. You're Leslie?
No, I'm Leslie. That's Jennifer.
This property is 18 Bushnell Avenue and is seeking to acquire additional land, which they agreed with their neighbor to the east to extinguish this boundary, and this would be the boundary.
Okay.
Same on this side. This is the eastern boundary along the garage, and they have agreed with this neighbor to make this boundary, make this the boundary between their property and the general.
Okay. And so on the east side, the house currently has zero setback.
Correct.
And it is gaining, how many feet now?
But in the front, it was 15 feet, I think, or something.
15, right there, oh, and 80, that, okay.
Not quite 90?
Yeah, okay.
I mean, what you have is a situation that, at least on the east side, with the boundary line adjustments coming in, it will result in the property, 18 Bushnell Avenue, being more in compliance. Not necessarily completely compliant, but more in compliance with the density control schedule that currently exists. As Matt pointed out, the corner of their house is a little bit over the line, if I remember right, okay? So this is a great improvement in terms of making that parcel more in compliance with the density control schedule.
Right.
It does not result in the parcel at 14 Bushnell Avenue, and do you know what the address is of the parcel near?
Edwards, what was that, 11th and 22nd?
22. It does not result in either one of those parcels not being in compliance with the village's density control schedule.
Okay.
This being an application, like the first application that we had on the agenda tonight, will require a public hearing because of the lot line boundary adjustment. So what you want to...
Are there signed documents in there for the two property owners that are giving up land? Because they need to be argued for this application.
I don't see that.
No.
Yeah.
This is, I guess, a verbal agreement that you have with the owner.
Because this is approving, changing, you know, a change of their property.
Their property.
We need to have some sort of...
A written, signed letter of each of the two people who are giving up land, saying that they are...
They agree.
Co-applicants essentially, or that they are...
In agreement with the boundary line adjustment as shown on that survey.
Does it need to be notarized or anything?
For our purposes, I don't think so. I mean, they're going to have to do a deed, you know, this is the map that they're going to have to, there's going to have to be a deed.
Eventually, yeah.
Right, you know, executed, which will have to be notarized. Because this is a map that shows what they're going to do, but there'll have to be a deed signed with the county clerk that actually conveys the land. This doesn't actually, this is not a conveyance, this is a map of what is going to be conveyed.
Right.
Yeah.
But still, every applicant has to either appear or authorize someone to appear on their behalf. And then, and because this is involving property that the residents don't own, the people who own that land have to sign on to.
So, and would it be appropriate for them to issue an authorization letter for Katrina to appear?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Something like that?
I think, I would say, they should just say to the planning board, I'm the owner of this thing. I, you know, consent to the proposal,
As shown on the...
And I authorize Katrina or Matt Bo to act as my agent. Those are the two factors.
So they originally have to appear?
They don't have to come in person.
We need to...
But that they're, who they are, you know, with the parcel they own, they approve of the proposal, and they're authorizing one of you two to act on their behalf or represent them before the planning board.
And then, this, the parcel to the west?
Yes.
Isn't that parcel currently for sale and under contract?
I believe it is.
So, just in terms of timing, like, if that parcel changes ownership, you have to get that...
You have to get another...
Exactly.
Have to get another owner, but...
Right.
At this point, unless they agree to it and then make that a condition of the sale, that this is pending review and approval by the planning board, but currently, they're the owner.
Right, right, no, I'm just pointing out that you have a time, you could have a time constraint if that deal closes before this is approved.
Then we have to get someone else on, or that they have to, the purchaser has to agree.
Right.
And get that in, right?
Yes.
Well, as I said, this is only, this is only the village saying it's okay. You still have to get the deeds.
Absolutely.
So the parcel, we still have to get the new person to...
Right, exactly, just have one of them just...
Write legal descriptions and all that.
Plank that out that the...
But that's, yeah, valid point.
Okay, so...
So this all can be done next.
So we have the schedule to look at?
I'll make a motion that we table this application, set up a public hearing for the next meeting with the understanding that the applicant will provide the information that has been discussed pertaining to this boundary line adjustment.
To these, right?
Yeah, discussed, which our discussion included the two adjacent property owners providing a statement that they're in agreement to the sale of the property as shown on the survey dated so-and-so. Okay? And that they authorize you or Katrina to represent them at the board meeting.
I have text messages for them.
And the next meeting, according to my calendar, is June 23rd. Just so you know the date.
Monday, the 7th.
Yes. Do they have to notify adjacent property owners?
Yep.
Okay, so...
How many?
Talk with the building inspector, with her...
Ones across the street, yes, around the... I can give you the names of them if you want.
Okay, so, I mean, the two adjacent are...
Yeah, so the two on either side, the fair and then across the street.
There's the fair, and then there's the, yeah. And you need the receipts?
Oh, I'll second that.
You want the receipts?
Yeah, just the certificated receipt, it doesn't need to be... Internal receipt, right?
Just send it, all in favor?
Aye.
Make sure the buyer of that house is lived yet, is it? I don't know, I feel like they might keep closing before that...
Probably will be for meat. I don't think he's put it on the market yet, but he's getting ready.
Okay.
But, yeah, Tim, I think they're waiting for contracts or something.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, just for your...
He'll be around here for your agenda.
They're trying to sell it for...
Yeah. Well, the house at the end was already on the market, and I believe it's under contract already.
Yeah.
That's why I...
Well, they must know, they must think they're going to buy it with this strip or not.
Well, that's why I would just make sure that they, you know, have a conversation with your neighbor and make sure that they have had that conversation.
Yeah, they sell it. Yeah, so the buyer, it's under the pressure of either they're getting the whole parcel or they're getting with this strip removed.
Do you know if they've had that conversation with the buyer or no?
That, I asked Tim, and he said that the, um, really just said that he couldn't talk to the buyers. I don't know why. Like, he couldn't be there and show the house.
Maybe he's doing directly, but in some many ways, the buyers need to know whether they're buying it entirely.
And they're under contract, they have attorneys on both sides at this point, they're under contract. So, the communication could go through attorneys if the realtors and...
Because it actually could really complicate things if they sell it in its entirety, and then you have to give the whole person, not the unborn of the plan.
Right.
I mean, if risk comes to worst, and you are not able to get things with meat side, you can still do a lot of line adjustment with 14 Bushnell Avenue.
Which is kind of, yeah.
Okay, I mean, if, you wouldn't have to drop the whole concept of boundary line adjustments.
We'll see what happens.
Okay. But Jennifer was right, it's something that everybody should be aware of. We don't want to approve something and find out that the property owner was not the property owner.
Right?
Yeah, because I mean, this process is giving its approval from the village's perspective. I mean, people come in sometimes and they propose subdivisions, and planning boards approve them, and then they never do. I mean, so, this doesn't create a subdivision.
No, this is not, this is not, right. That doesn't happen, as you said, until the...
Yeah, people often come in and say, we don't want to come to a bunch of deeds, and the planning board say, fine, and then they decide they don't want to do development, they never do it, they never file with the county, they never do anything, they never do any deeds. It's just, it's something, it's invalid for, I don't know what the, which I put it, for a while, for a few years, probably.
Well, you have 60 days to file a map. And I'm assuming if you file a map, it'll, but it'll, even if the map is filed, if you never have, the deed is never transferred, it sits there, and it's never, yeah.
So if it's approved, it means this is what you can do. If you can work it out with the current owners or anybody down the road, you know, in the village's sense, okay, it's a network and that's true.
Deb Gilbert, speaking of boundary line adjustments, that's back on the burner for the iconic, so, just go.
Thank you. Do we have the minutes to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, on Monday, April 28th.
2025?
2025.
Yes, I have read them, and I approve.
Okay, I approve. I second the motion, whatever. All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. That should be the end of our meeting. A rather lengthy one, I appreciate everything else.